And the reason is because that communication is more secure than anything else.
Yeah.
So we do it, uh, faxes with the banks and with the, uh, pad companies.
As long as you don't fat finger the number that you're trying to find.
Right.
But then you, you do have a problem.
Okay. Welcome Elliot. I am going to call to order. August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting of Lacy Planning Commission. We have two absences tonight. Judith and Daphne are out. Everybody else is here. Welcome. So the first thing, so I just did the roll call, so I'm gonna ask Spencer, please read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you Jeff. We, the city of Lacey are in the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawksen Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who are absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as their traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call to attention uh, the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you very much. So first item is that we have for an action item is approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, Gail and Spencer. All in favor?
Yeah.
Close? Awesome. And then next is approval of the July twenty-four meeting minutes. No, we approved the agenda.
My apologies.
I've moved to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Second.
Okay, that was Spencer then Elliot. Moving second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Awesome. Okay, now we come to public comment. We do have a couple of people. I, we have one from the public here. Hallie, are you going to speak?
Sure.
Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay.
And state your name and where you live.
Okay. Um, my name is Hallie Echire. I live in Moncrief area, ninety-five one six. Um, I don't know, more of these are men. There. It's up there. Okay. Um, yeah, so I'm still very much in favor of, you know, doing rid of parking minimums. Like commercial parking minimums, you know, still kind of new to this whole like urban city planning sort of thing. So I don't have the terminology correct. Um, Pons calls them parking maximums. Um, still really dreaming of, uh, of Lacey, the great urbanist, people-oriented city. Going bikes and like these buses or like, I don't know, some sort of, some sort of city transit. More efficient, walking everywhere. Still really looking forward to that. It's a little bit depressing. Um. Yeah, um, that's pretty much it. I'll just say, I think Lacey really is going in a good direction because I recently drove through Summit View and I was horrified. Um, this, the, the roads are really big, like so, really big. I think like a six lane strobe. Three lanes and, three lanes in each direction. I was like, anyway. Anyway, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have another member here, but he is going to speak to the agenda item. Is he part of the presentation?
Yeah, so that's Thurston County staff. It'd be interesting. Just second.
Okay, welcome. Both of you. Uh, any commission members reports?
Alaska was great.
I, what's that?
I said Alaska was great.
Awesome. I bet Alaska is awesome. So I do have something. I, I want to address part of, uh, the last meeting that we had. Um, the planning commission has historically been very, very casual in its operations. And, you know, discussions amongst members have been kind of like talking to Navy Defense. Public comment period. Um, that last one was more of a presentation than it actually was public comment and is stretched on for way too long. I wasn't sure, uh, just because I didn't know historically with planning commission how to pull a hard stop on them. And I spoke with Ryan and I, I understand the city council is considering doing time clocks. But in the meantime, you know, for my part, I'm gonna end up doing more of a hard stop so that it doesn't become that. Uh, one thing that I had that I, I tried to say it's gonna be a future agenda item, gonna be a future agenda item. And discussion continued, so we, we can't have that. And like I said, we've all historically been very casual in the way we've operated, but what I would appreciate is that anybody that wants to speak, please raise your hand, nod at me, whatever you want to do to let me know you want to speak. Please wait until you're acknowledged. I will give everybody a chance to speak. But that way I think the meeting will have a little bit more professionalism to it. And the commission will end up looking better to the public. So thank you very much for, uh, your consideration of those things. Okay, department report.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of echo what, what Jeff just said and, and actually if you look at, uh, the next meetings, uh, so we've got your, your calendar that we always put in your packet. We've got two items on that agenda. Uh, one is the, uh, public comment policy. So the, the council is, has been developing a, uh, public comment policy uh, that will be implemented by the various advisory boards, including the planning commission. And so uh, we will have some staff from our city manager's office at the next meeting to fill us in on what that public comment policy is. And we will be kind of, um, we'll, we'll, we'll be complying with the policy and making sure that we're following along with what the council is doing. And so that will be things like potentially a timer in the room, um, potentially a, a podium or some place for people to stand of, because our microphone right now is in the ceiling and so it makes it difficult for people to, um, to address us when we're back here at this table. So um, we're actually going to be meeting internally tomorrow and, and coordinating some of those things. So stay tuned on that front. There will be more to come at that next planning commission meeting on that. Uh, as well as a work session on overview around Robert's rules of order. So, um, that's, uh, something that like, like Jeff said, I think we've, um, for a long time been fairly informal here at the planning commission and I, what I'm anticipating is that, um, we will be implementing more of Robert's rules. Uh, and, and actually maybe creating a little bit more formal atmosphere. Um, and part of that too is we, we'll look at things like how do, how do we engage and have like a clerk of the planning commission, which is probably what kind of Aaron will do and actually kind of help lead the agenda as far as getting us to the next item, calling roll call, those kinds of things. Um, so stay tuned on that front, but, uh, one of the things that we'll do is it'll make sure that, um, that I can miss meetings so that, you know, helps, it makes sure that I don't necessarily need to be at every planning commission meeting because with so much on my plate. Um, it's become clear that, you know, I need to, other than just canceling meetings, which we've been doing, is having other staff be able to come in and run meetings when, when I'm not here. Um, so stay tuned on that front. Well, the, the next meeting that we have is planning commission will be dedicated at this point a hundred percent to those items. So um, we, we'll have more information presented to you at, at that point. I, I did want to mention.
I just wanted to say, thank you Ryan for that. And I just want to add to that. The changes are coming because the public is tending to exploit public comment periods at these meetings. It has nothing to do with what anybody in the planning commission has done or said. Nothing. It is purely because the public has figured out how to exploit these public comment periods. And unfortunately, even in, in Lacey, which I still consider to be a small city, it's, you know, cause and need for some of these changes so that we can keep control of the meetings.
Yeah. Very good point. Thank you for that. Uh, I did have some upcoming, uh, events or dates that I did want to mention to you as far as some of the things related to our comprehensive plan update process. So uh, here in a couple of weeks on Tuesday, September tenth, we'll be providing the city council with an update. Uh, any of the planning commission members are, uh, that are able to attend are, are invited. The purpose of that update with the council is to, uh, present to them the engagement, the outreach, communication, engagement plan that you all reviewed. Um, so they're gonna be, be reviewing that. They're also going to be hearing from us as far as the outreach events that we were at this summer. And then finally, we're gonna have a discussion with them a, around, uh, what their involvement level, what they would like their involvement level to be in the company, development of comprehensive plan over the next year as we get um, deeper in the weeds on things towards our December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five deadline. So, uh, that's at a work session on September tenth. On October fifth, we will have a booth, uh, comprehensive plan outreach booth at Children's Day and that'll be at Huntermore Park. Uh, that's midday. I'm not exactly sure the time. I think it's eleven to two or something like that. So uh, as we get closer to that, I'll, I'll certainly remind you, but if you want to get that on the calendar, kind of midday, that's Saturday, October fifth. And then we will also be at, uh, South Sound Chamber is hosting what they're calling Winter Fest. That's on November second. Um, and we will be hosting a booth at that as well. That's a, a new event as far as I'm aware that the South Sound Chamber's hosting. Um, not, it is a time and location TBD at this point, but, um, we've got, got a reservation and to host a booth uh, for the South Sound Chambers Winter Fest, uh, event. And that's again, November second. Not sure if I mentioned that or not. So do you have a number of events coming up? And then just for general awareness, this fall, we're also doing a, a number of kind of online engagement things and we'll, we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in future meetings, but uh, essentially more surveying and more kind of, um, digital feedback, including an interactive map program. So as we develop the surveys and as we develop the interactive map program, we'll come back and share that with planning commission.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Ryan? Okay. We have no public hearing, uh, no new business, old business. Is it revisited an issue we talked about last meeting, which is a site-specific rezone request? Um, remember, whatever we determine is gonna be a recommendation to the county planning commission because the land is in your growth area. Um, it's not binding, but it is a recommendation from us. So Ryan, take.
Yeah, and Andrew, do you want to maybe just come and have a seat over here? I'll get, uh, give me one second to share the presentation. See if I can do, kind of move this stuff around. Oh, there it goes. Okay. So Andrew, just scroll down, um, probably the easiest thing to do on the, on the mouse. So uh, introduce, is it Bond your last name? So Andrew Bond, planner with Thurston County. Um, so Andrew is here to provide a little bit more information around the, the rezone application. So as, as Jeff mentioned, um, this was a, a private applicant request that, um, we're requesting our planning commission make a recommendation to the Thurston County Planning Commission on. Uh, so this is a recommendation of a recommendation that's going to ultimately be decided by the board of county commissioners. Um, and, uh, you, you might remember at the last meeting, we had an initial briefing on this. There were some questions that the planning commission had around uh, the status of the property as a violation. Um, some questions around, uh, compatibility concerns with some of the surrounding single family neighborhoods and those kinds of things. And and so, uh, Andrew's here to, to, he provided a staff report, first of all, that's in your packets for some additional information and context. And then is going to be going through the presentation here and is here to answer questions in more detail than what I might have been able to do a month or so ago. So with that, yeah.
I just want, I'm sorry, before, before we get started, if you, if this was discussed at the last meeting and I missed it, I apologize, but can you explain a little bit why we're doing this? Because in all the years I've been on the planning commission, we've never made a recommendation to Thurston County. Like, we've never done anything else.
Yeah, good question.
I saw this on the agenda when I was out of town and I thought, that's really odd. I don't understand why we're doing that.
Well, and this is what the first one in my, you know, my career that I've done as well. So they, they're, I'll, I'll say relatively rare. So the typically what we do with site-specific rezone applications and, and coordinating with Thurston County, Thurston County has usually packaged these up as part of the update to the joint plan. So if you remember with the last joint plan update, there were three or four specific, site-specific rezone applications that were that had recommendations on them at that point. At the very end of that joint planning process, this property owner, this applicant came forward and said, I have a split zone piece of property that I think we need to address through the joint plan update and it, we were too far along in the process to integrate any of their, their requests. And so at that point, I think the board of county commissioners or somebody at the county said, well, let's, you need to get on our docket. You need to get on the Thurston County docket and, and go through kind of the normal, um, annual comprehensive plan amendment process that the, the county puts out to applicant, applicants. So um, so that, they applied through the, the county docket process. It was added to the Thurston County docket of comprehensive plan amendments. And so the, the county will be kind of hearing this application, making a decision on it by the end of this year. In doing that, because we have joint planning arrangements with Thurston County, um, we have basically a, a stake in, in the review of this by making a recommendation to their planning commission. And so what this does is it kind of eliminates the need to have any kind of joint planning commission meeting or joint recommendation. It's basically a, you know, we're, we're able to do this through our process and then send it to Thurston County so that we don't have to, you know, gather as a group again like we did it a year or so ago as a joint planning commission. That make sense? Yeah, it does. Thank you. Okay. Eat a week off between meetings. I think it's really the, the benefit of it all. Um, so what I'm gonna do is provide just a brief overview presentation. Again, my name is Andrew Bond with, uh, Community Planning and Economic Development of Thurston County. And I'm gonna run through this presentation. The presentation is gonna be similar to the one you saw at the previous meeting with just a little bit more information. And then at the end, there's kind of two options. Thurston County doesn't typically create a recommendation from staff. And so what we do typically is option A is kind of a maintain as is with some, uh, thoughts behind it. So maintain density, so on. And then the secondary option is move forward with the applicant requested option and then some, uh, information about what that means for that, uh, option. And so I'm just gonna go ahead and start. This presentation is on the Martin Way Land Use and Rezone Amendment. Uh, this presentation is kind of broken up into three parts. I'm gonna go over just the general process that Ryan has kind of alluded to, uh, already. Uh, just a review of the proposal and just, uh, an overview of the recommendations. As Ryan has mentioned, it's, uh, a little bit more simpler than when we did the joint planning process where you didn't really get a week off between planning commission meetings. We're gonna just kind of take it from the city to the county, back to the city, back to the county. Uh, kind of aligning with our planning commission schedules with the final action being taken by the board. So just a little bit of history on the site. Uh, there are ongoing issues with violations, but one of them has been resolved. That was related to the vehicle sales aspect. Um, the site, the larger portion of the site was used for vehicle storage, which with low-density residential, uh, that is a prohibited use. And so one of the aspects to take into consideration with this rezone is that the MHDC zoning uh, does allow vehicle sales as a special use permit. So there is a review by, I believe, the hearing examiner uh, to determine if it's an appropriate use or not. The other, sorry, the other worth noting is related to the tree removal and that violation is stuck to the parcel. So whenever an application does come in for any sort of development application, that will be rectified at that time. It's not tied to the zoning. And so if the owner were to sell tomorrow, or if it were to be rezoned to the MHDC, that violation will live on and will follow it until that day that they submit a development application for any sort of site work. And then that, uh, will have to be resolved at that time. Shifting down to kind of, uh, a map of the area. So what you'll see and what we have seen is there is quite a bit of variety of zoning in the area. Obviously, the portion that they are requesting is a low-density section adjacent, uh, to, uh, medium density as well as high density, as well as obviously the loads on the sides of it. The portion shown in the larger half will be the portion that would be rezoned to MHDC. And with that rezoning, um, will come all the benefits of that zoning district. So the commercial uses and residential density increases. For some site conditions, uh, there is city water and sewer available in Martin Way. And I believe there is, uh, water and sewer on Third, uh, Avenue or Third Street. Just on the south side of the parcel. There are no, uh, critical areas identified on the site. Uh, currently the site is accessed from Martin Way. However, there is, uh, direct adjacency to Third Street. At the time of development, the city, the county engineer has the opportunity to say due to the lower density of that area, access may not be granted. You'll have to focus all your access off Martin Way. But that's gonna be kind of determined at the time of development. And again, the violation that is most known is the vehicle storage and that at this time has been resolved because they did remove all of the trailers off the site.
So is it totally vacant now?
It is. So shifting down, some of the, uh, areas that we wanted to touch on within our materials, it's just the different studies that, uh, touch on this site or the joint plan. So I'm gonna start with the, the Martin Way corridor study, then shift into the Lacey joint plan and then into Thurston County code. One aspect of this site is that it is part of the Martin Way corridor study, which was the study from the city of Olympia through, uh, Thurston County into the city of Lacey, which did, uh, identify and encourage uh, certain types of development, which are more high-density housing and mixed-use development. And this is the corridor they expect to see the greatest growth in the next twenty years with a potential for affordable housing and, uh, an increase in character and a sense of place as you travel down that corridor. The Lacey joint plan also does recognize the Martin Way corridor and the emphasis that should be put towards it. There is a a, a goal to look at just the overall code, to focus on a mix of uses and increase anything that may be beneficial to, uh, the urban growth area as well as the city. There is an emphasis on increased affordability of housing along the Martin Way corridor as, uh, well as transportation improvements that provide all modes of transportation equal and accessible access. Uh, as well as inclusive housing and a sense of place and ownership as you travel down. Shifting into Thurston County code, it's more of just kind of a, uh, kind of a breakdown of what could be expected. So with the low-density residential, there is obviously an emphasis on residential. No commercial uses are permitted in that zone. And what we anticipate seeing is a potential of up to forty-two, uh, dwelling units on that site. Obviously with setbacks and different building requirements, that number may, uh, reduce, but that is at least the maximum that could be, uh, developed on the site. If it were to be rezoned to mixed-use high-density corridor, we could see an increase of up to eighty-four to a hundred and forty dwelling units plus a variety of commercial uses that are permitted with that zoning. The one important thing to note is that residential at this time is not a required element of that zoning. And so they may stick with the commercial, but they also do have the opportunity to go residential if they so choose or if future owners so choose. So as I mentioned, we do have, uh, some recommendations worth noting. And I apologize, I am not the planner on this, but filling in, um, what I can do is provide just, uh, a run-through of both options. And so the first option is a no change. That would maintain it at low-density residential, which would result in the comprehensive plan as well as the zoning map not changing. Uh, all the land use and zoning requirements that are currently in place would be maintained for the low-density residential development. Uh, it does not meet the applicant's request. It pervert, preserves options for low-density neighborhoods, uh, in the adjacent area, um, and keeps the low-density consistent with the surrounding, uh, three sides. Option two, uh, would amend the land use and zoning designation to the MH, MHDC. And that would result in a change to our, uh, land use map as well as our zoning map. It would rezone around that seven point one acres to that, uh, new zoning. It would increase the level of housing density as well as commercial uses permitted in the area. It would meet the request of the applicants and existing violations would continue on with future, uh, development. And so there's no getting out of it. You will have to resolve it one day, um, or another. And that's kind of the short and sweet of the presentation that I brought and I'm available for questions.
Andy or Andrew?
Andrew.
I guess this isn't really a question so much as just confirming that my understanding is correct because it kind of feels like I have kind of mixed feelings on this. Like, low density doesn't seem like it's right there either. Um, mixed use, high density seems like that's kind of what we want, right? A mix of residential and all that. But the current property owner had, it sounds like has no intention of doing that, which is perfectly fine, even if we so if we, if we recommend that they, that it be changed, then that just means that it'll be a used car lot basically for until someone decides that it's more, uh, profitable to build some housing there. Is that kind of where we are?
So with a land use and rezoning application, we don't ask what they plan on doing. Essentially, we, with them saying any sort of, uh, idea, it does not hold them to it. So giving us the best and the brightest answer is, you can't really hold them to that. So we've found that telling them just, this is the benefits versus the negatives is what you should focus on, not what the development is. I will mention that at the county planning commission meeting, that was a general consensus. It was, felt like they were, um, benefiting of violation, like as a way to buy, bypass it. But what the conversation kind of shifted to was while what the conversation kind of shifted to was while that may not be the best way to look at it, the benefits of the long-term plan. So having that area shifted to that high density residential or that mixed use capabilities far outweighed the violations that were in place. And since the violations are tied to the property and not the zoning, they will eventually be rectified with any sort of future development. And with any sort of proposal, I think it's worth noting that it's the long-term game. It might be a car dealership for two years, but then when the market changes and there's a significant demand, that capability for that high density or that mixed use is now available for a pretty significantly large lot that you don't typically see in an urbanized area.
What does rectification of those violations look like? Is that a fine? Is that?
No, it will be site improvements. And so I don't know the specifics. It involves grading and erosion control and things like that because the trees obviously did play a role in mutating the the erosion prevention. This is not my forte, as you can tell, but it will have to be resolved. And so if they were to hypothetically put a building in, those sort of erosion controls, stormwater management, that would be built into that proposal. And if it were just simply to be a small section parking lot, they would still have to build that erosion control and that stormwater management into that proposal. And then that would in theory rectify the violation.
I would agree. The site doesn't really seem to fit a low density because it has, it's backed up with homes from nineteen sixties. Some of them are low, low income. Some are retirement. You know, there's big mixed use back there, but the most of them are just established homes, a lot of rentals behind there. So it'd be a huge contrast between the brand new homes and if it were to go home. Norm with the access, you would only have access on Martin Way, very busy street, which means they would have to do street lights, et cetera, all at the expense of the county or city. But the, the mixed use, we made the point last time around that we're not really in punitive portion of it. So rewarding bad behavior, but that's not really something that we were looking for what's best for that corridor. So the multi, it sounds like the multi-use would be the best way for the multi corridor. Whether they could put in retirement, building, something like that. But my main question was, what about the homes behind there? Have we got feedback from them? What they would?
So we set the public hearing for the county planning commission for October second. We have initiated public public outreach. We did postcard mailings to I think it was within three hundred feet, which actually touched on one of the apartment complexes as well as all of the adjacent properties. We've done a webmail blast to over a thousand people. We did an onsite notice on Third Street so that all of the neighbors directly adjacent to it as they drive by will see it, which is not typical, but we do, we were requested to go a little bit over and beyond with this request. So we did. We're also doing outreach through our weekly Friday five posting through the county as well as we've done the legal ads and kind of all the more standard noticing practices.
I guess I have one more question. What would the height restriction be for billing there if we did go the other route?
I have to look. I don't know the specifics of that zoning.
I just wondered if it would just tower over that neighborhood.
There, I do believe there are pieces written in about setbacks and just if it's adjacent to residential, there are mechanisms that you have to put in to mitigate the impacts. And so sometimes it can be landscaping, separation requirements, especially when it's a low density district based adjacent to a larger district. In my experience, there has been some sort of mitigation setback that you have to put in. So variation of trubs and shrubs and trees and things like that, but I don't know the specifics as it relates to this.
So I guess kind of along those lines, if they were to just say, okay, we're going to put all our trailers back now. There's a permitted use, would they still be required to? I mean, I know in Lacey and I would assume in the county, there's got to be some requirements like you were just talking about where you butt up against low density residential, which it looks like that whole one side does to do all that stuff. So would they still be, they couldn't just say, okay, we got our our zoning change. Now we can bring all the trailers back, right? They still have to meet all the setback or visual whatever requirements that there are there.
I think the important piece of that is it's a special use. And so it will be greater review than a typical administrative approval. I believe it is a hearing examiner. So the hearing examiner will review the application in detail to ensure that it's meeting all the requirements of separation between the different districts as well as all the requirements for site development to need that. And so it wouldn't just be simply as soon as they're rezoned, they can put the trailers back. They do have quite a few steps that they have to go through next.
Thank you. Yeah. So there's a couple of things in the application I had questions about during the environmental review section. It said the property sits on a vital aquifer. And then in their application, they said that there is no impact on groundwater retention runoff, any of those things, which doesn't seem to match that information, which was directly said there. Same thing with it said that it was in the the pocket gopher area, but there was no mention of how that would be remediated or handled. So that was another big question I had about that. You know, there's other things there where as you were mentioning about the adjacent neighborhoods, I don't know if the fifteen foot recommended setback of type one landscaping is going to be enough to buffer those neighborhoods. I know that's the maximum allowed by the current code. But it didn't seem like in their application, they addressed any of that. It was mostly non-project, non-project, just move along kind of down the list and didn't really provide any information. And then finally, there were several sections where it seemed like they vacillated with their intent on it. Originally, they said they were going to expand their sale, their trailer storage. And then it said, well, we actually don't have any current determination of what the land is going to be used for later on. And then it kind of flip flopped a little bit in there. So I, you know, it kind of leaves me not sure what's the actual outcome of this and what's that going to look like?
So I'll, I'll start on maybe the kind of the environmental side and then maybe Andrew can kind of fill in any additional details on, on the rest of it. But you know, as far as a, a non-project action, as far as a rezone application goes, the, the type of answers from an environmental level are those are, I would say fairly typical of what we see for any kind of our rezone applications. And number one, let's talk about like the, you know, the groundwater recharge areas is that, you know, a lot of those things are, are analyzed at a specific like land use level. When you have a, a development proposal, then there are specific conditions put in place to make sure that the groundwater resources are protected. So for example, that area of Martin Way, you know, Tango Wild Thompson Place has a lot of old septic systems. So if, for example, the developer was wanting to put in septic systems, you know, probably something that wouldn't be allowed, especially given that we have city utilities on Martin Way. And, and you know, those kinds of things, if it was, so we, we have to think about it like, okay, if you have these kind of two options, what is more kind of beneficial from a groundwater protection standpoint? Is it individual lots that you could have somebody out, you know, changing their oil on the weekend or putting out fertilizer on, you know, on the weekend, or is it better to have kind of a, a larger complex where it may be commercial or multifamily that's a little bit more closely managed. So that's that's kind of the kind of what I think the planning commission needs to weigh is not, not, because it's always looked at at a very specific level when you have a development proposal in front of you and that's done by staff. And then pocket gopher wise, most of Lacey, including the Lacey urban growth area is identified as pocket gopher soils. So the soil type is the soil type that the Mazzon pocket gopher is going to, going to you know, be prevalent in. But what you have to do is you have to look at a bunch of other considerations like, you know, what, what is the, the cover? So before the trees were taken down, it was a relatively forested site in an urban area. So the likelihood of pocket gopher would be pretty low, but they would still have to do whatever the county required in terms of, you know, site analysis at a project level to make sure that they met the the Endangered Species Act requirements that the county is bound to uphold. So again, that gets back to the project level. So, you know, when you think about a high level, okay, what, you know, what would be better for the environment? Would it be forty-two individual homes or something that is larger in scale, something that's, you know, going to be commercial, residential? That's really kind of the level that the planning commission needs to look at. I don't know if there's any additional details that you have as far as like, you know, if they were talking about a trailer lot or not, I, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. And I think it really ties back to the big picture, like the long-term plan of the site. And I think when it's just very similar to saying like, I might want to do this with my yard or I might want to do this with my yard. Kind of it's, it can go back and forth. There's lots of ideas. At the end of the day, it doesn't weigh on this application because what the, the question is, is do you want to see this type of change for the long-term future and all the benefits that come with that change? So the the increased density, the commercial allowances, the potential for greater design characteristics added to the corridor. And with any future changes that happen with the Martin Way corridor and kind of building that up to the glory that it will be one day. And this might be the first step. It's kind of like the, the big picture. And so I will admit our applications are not well-designed and haven't been touched in many years. The plan is to take a look at ours to actually redo them so that there's a little more thought put into them versus very generic questions that do you meet the comprehensive plan? Or the joint plan? So that is, I hear you when you say that it's not the greatest and the responses kind of are all over the place and that could in part be because the application is outdated.
So I, I think that one of the things that complicated our discussion last month at our meeting was the appearance was very strong that, okay, so here was this violation and a property owner is being asked, okay, get me out of it, right? And now I'm seeing that there's a little bit more of a process. So I appreciate you being here tonight and explaining the process. But one thing I want to, to make sure we're perfectly clear on. So because quite honestly, from the application, it honestly appears to me that what they want to do is put the trailers back on the property. But what I'm hearing from you is they couldn't do that without going through an application and review process. And as part of that application review process, the mitigation of the damage and the stormwater and all that will have to be rectified. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, I, I, I see the long-term. I mean, if this applicant wants to sell this property eventually, the, the advantage to him is to be able to build more on it or to have a builder develop more on it than how, whatever you said, forty homes and maybe less than that. So I think the highest and best use of it is to change it and hope that in the future it will become more valuable to a developer to purchase and, and buy because it's probably marginal right now for a developer to come in, probably get stuck with all the mitigation and then build houses versus if you can build, you know, a hundred and fifty units on that property, then you can probably absorb the cost of the mitigation and make money. And I think that's what the developer community wants to do, obviously, is make money. And I think that the owner could sell then and that, and I think that's probably the best use. I mean, it does stick in your craw a little bit because it was a violation and by God, we all get fined for what we do, except, you know, if there's a way to weasel out of it. But you know, I think it's probably better to say let's, you know, we need housing, let's build as much as we can where we can and, you know, profit both sides of the equation.
So I have one question and then a short comment. The question is if it, if it was left at low density residential, could access be brought in from Third Street and developed as a neighborhood? Or would that just be not realistic within? No, I'm not talking about developers being realistic, but would that be even feasible with the current configuration?
It's possible. We'd have to look at how the road is classified, if it's public, private and things like that. We'd also have to determine if the road is currently at capacity and things like that. That would all fall to our county engineer to determine that with probably close coordination with the city because ultimately if the city were to annex in that area, we want to make sure that it's built to meet their specifications.
So there is a letter in your packet, a memo, I think, from the county public works department regarding access and, and road design. So I'll point to that. I don't think there's specifically, that question wasn't asked. I think it says the primary access is required to be on Martin Way. Third may be used for emergency access only. So I'm not sure if that means like, you know, like a subdivision would be able to have secondary access off Third Avenue. Chances are, you know, my experience says that, that most likely if it's a single family subdivision, that most likely would be connected. And the reason is, is that you want connection through neighborhood. So people don't have to drive around the block to get from one neighborhood to the other.
Get to the end of the street.
But if it was something else, commercial, multifamily, those kinds of things, then usually that access is limited. And so it would maybe be if it's emergency access, it's something that's ballered it or something like that where you're not allowing, you know, private property traffic to go onto a city street. So the primary access is going to be on Martin Way. You might also notice that it says Martin Way would be restricted. There'd be a a center median extended there and then it would be a ride-in, ride-out.
Yeah, I guess just my final thoughts on this are, you know, when you look at this map, I mean, one of our, one of our goals has been really to infill because that's what we, what we need to do in order to build up density in order to meet our housing requirements going forward. It seems like a waste to be this close to the Martin Way corridor and have that be low density residential. And as Gail was saying, it, it doesn't seem like it would be very profitable to a developer even to put those in there because you're going to have single family homes that are within earshot of Martin Way. And so it feels like the right thing to do despite the, you know, as Gail said again, the, the way it sticks in your craw, it feels like the right thing to do is to make all of that be high density, multi-use. And so I, I guess in the end, I would, I would say that I'm in favor of this option because it seems silly to have low density right there with all those services.
I did want to just mention one I did find on the Thurston County code for the Lacey urban growth area, the mixed use, high density corridor, building height requirements. So for building heights, you're not allowed to go above forty-five feet within a hundred feet of a prior, prior existing single family subdivision. That's about three stories within a hundred feet of, of a subdivision. Beyond that, there is no limitation as far as what I'm reading here. So but there, there is some consideration when you get within a hundred feet of an existing single family subdivision.
So at this point, I would ask, is the commission ready to make a recommendation to the county planning commission? And if so, I would entertain a motion.
I second. Thought you were saying put it to vote.
No, I am asking if somebody is willing to make a motion.
I would move that we recommend that this be be signed or that we are in favor of high density development on that.
Mixed use, high density corridor.
Mixed use, high density corridor. Thank you. I knew that was a word.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded to recommend the Thurston County Planning Commission that the Lacey Planning Commission is in favor of rezoning that section of the property to mixed use, high density corridor. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. So I do want to make one comment though about a couple of comments on their application. They said this property was mistakenly split zoned. I've been in the land use business for thirty-eight years. There are thousands of properties that are split zoned. I don't think it was a mistake. I think it was somebody's idea at the time that the zoning was done. That's, that's the end of my comment there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. And thank you for all the clarifications. That really helped us a lot. Okay. And with that, planning commission schedule, our next meeting. planning commission schedule, our next meeting is September 11th. And as Ryan said, that's going to be mainly Robert's Rules of Order and that sort of thing.
That's right.
Is the planning, the city council going to have made their decision by then on public comment?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not exactly sure. I don't think they have officially adopted the policy yet. So I'm going to have to check on that and see what the dates line up. But at that point, we'll be able to know, you know, what, even if they haven't adopted yet, what direction they're going to go in so that we can start. What I would imagine is September 11th is going to be kind of the briefing, and this is what we're going to kind of roll out and do. September 25th is going to be, so that's two weeks from that September 11th date. It's actually going to be kind of our first meeting under the kind of new operational norms, if you will. So we're not going to change anything, you know, next meeting, but we'll hear about what those changes are and we'll then start implementing them at that September 25th meeting.
All right. Everybody have a good night. Remember, everybody at home thinks you're in a meeting for another hour or so.